Is the alternate to add the wings in the back? No. Oh, yeah.
This conference will now be recorded.
I'll call the Wilmer City Council's special meeting to order on Thursday, May 13th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien. O'Brien. Your volume is off.
Mike, your volume's off. No, he's here.
He's... Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Happily here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you very much for those of you that are tuning in. Mike, I'm not sure if you can hear us. If you can hear us, give us a thumbs up. Anyways, we have Councilmember O'Brien attending remotely, and we have the rest of the council here in front of us. Just a procedural thing, you have a list of 10 questions in front of you. Feel free to ask one of those questions as we go around. I'll go to my right, starting with Councilmember Fagerly, asking the first question, and then we'll go around, and then we'll see where we're at with time. So with that, Patty, do you want me to go to you? Okay. Tyler, if you want to just come up to the podium and get ready for your interview here. So, you know, Tyler, today it's been really a full day of activities, you know, starting at 9:00 this morning, and I understand you went for a run in our community this morning and really enjoyed that from what I heard.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Great, great.
Very nice. I'm not a coffee drinker, so that gets my blood going in the morning.
All right, all right. Appreciate that. So, but what we want to do tonight is we want to have more of just the informal conversation. If you want to remove your mask, you certainly can. And we want to have just an informal conversation with you. And, you know, we've looked at your resume, we've looked at everything that you've got going on, and we've had an opportunity, a number of us, to interact with you today. And so we just want to have more of a casual conversation, not a real formal interview-type thing, but we want to get to know more about you. So, we're really pleased that you came up from Florida to see us, but you didn't come here to listen to the mayor talk, you came to talk to us. So, just a question, how did you... What did you find most enjoyable about your tour that you had this afternoon?
The most enjoyable aspect is the people. You know, meeting with members of the community, and I said it to some other folks earlier as well, meeting the staff of the city. Though, you know, those are the people I'm going to be leading, members of the community and the city staff. And so really getting to see them, to get to know them, and, you know, I hope to get to know everybody in here a lot better. But that's what I enjoyed the most, getting to see the people, getting to know the people.
Excellent, excellent. And then what are the specific things, if you could give us two or three examples, specific things, that really drew you to apply for this position, and what's attractive here in Wilmer to you? And you've talked a lot about family in the first interview we did with you, and then throughout the day today, you've talked a lot about family. And so what are some specific things that you and your family would be looking at in a community where you would be looking to relocate?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, when we began our job search, we certainly wanted to be close to some extended family. After moving four times and eight years with the military, we were kind of ready to see our family. We've got a lot of family in Nebraska, just a few hours away, so definitely, that's a huge piece for us, and we're really glad to do that if we're selected here. We also want to see what the schools are like. Obviously, we have, you know, one kiddo in college, and the rest are going to be in high school, middle school, elementary schools, so we want to see what the schools are like. I've received a lot of positive feedback from members of the council and the community and the superintendent, as that was really, really grateful. I was really grateful that he came out to meet me. That meant a lot to me. It says a lot about how the school is led and how the community's led. And, you know, looking at, you know, for personal, if we're talking, you know, strictly personal things, I'm assuming that's your intent, right?
Yep, yep.
Man, there's so many fun things to do here. I got out last night onto the disc golf course because I had to scratch that itch, right? And I had a lot of fun. I met a guy named Zach. We really had a lot of fun out there. My son Eli, he's involved in league night with me going disc golfing, so that's something that he'll really enjoy as well, getting out to the parks. We don't spend a lot of time in front of screens as a family. You know, my son, who's in high school, has a phone that we got for us, not for him, so we could communicate with him when we need. So what I'm... Where I'm going with that is that means we spend a lot of time outside. We go outside, we do a lot of things. I plan on coming into these parks and just having a lot of fun. One of my first stops was Swanson Field because I'm going to be... The park there. I'm going to be coaching our soccer teams and baseball teams and everything else our kids are going to be doing. And those facilities are really nice, so just really impressed by the quality of the facilities and the community. There's a lot of things here for our family that will be very fitting for us.
Great, thank you.
Rick?
All right, thank you for being here, and welcome to Wilmer.
Thank you.
What do you see as a challenge facing Wilmer in the next two years, and how will you deal with it?
A challenge facing Wilmer, okay. So one of the biggest things that I learned about today, so I knew about the local option sales tax, about the projection of $30 million of funds hopefully as the goal, and realizing that, you know, some of those weren't... The city isn't quite meeting the anticipated outcome at this rate yet. So what I need to... That's one of the biggest challenges, to figure out, okay, if we don't raise as much money as we're hoping, what cuts do we have to make? Or where can we find funding elsewhere to keep going with these projects? What do we have to do? So, making that work, and, you know, that's one of the biggest things that I see.
Okay, thank you. Going down the line? Okay. This is wordy. What is your philosophy and approach to fiscal accountability, transparency, and the strategic investment of public funds?
Okay, so, I was actually just talking to the mayor on the way in here about my rental car. He was razzing me a little bit because I was driving a nicer car than he was. You know, I actually looked for the cheapest option available when renting a car because, you know, the city's paid for my trip up here. And I saw that a full-size car was the same price as, you know, the tiny economy-sized car, so it's like, oh, I'll go with that. And then when I got to the airport, they're like, we don't have that. So, well, let's upgrade you again to a midsize SUV-type thing, crossover Subaru-type thing. And it was just kind of a... You know, I was driving around, I was like, man, I hope everyone's not thinking that I'm trying to swindle the city here into giving me the best ride and the most luxury trip here and everything else. But, so my approach is very similar to that, just being frugal, being modest in spending. There are some things that will need some expenditures, and I'm not afraid to spend more on those things that require it in order to increase the quality of life, but for a lot of simple things that we can do modestly with, let's do that. So, that's how I approach my personal finances, living within our means, not spending more than we make, and planning out long-term. My personal budget is at least 12 months I can see out. Every single month I've got forecasted out down to school pictures for the kids in September, okay? And so my approach is to get an understanding of that fiscal, of the budget of the city, see what the long-term goals are, making sure that we're trending in that direction and using funds wisely. So I hope that answers your question. Did I get all those?
It does, but I'm going to expound on it a little bit. Knowing that you have a military background, been eight years in the military.
Yep.
Has there been projects that you thought could be done cheaper? And how did you do that?
Yeah, absolutely, there were. So I'll answer with two things. I'll tell you about a project that I worked on that was very good for the base, and another approach that I thought was absolutely wrong. In the military, a lot of times they tell you to request funds, request at least the same amount of funds for your unit that you requested the year before. Because if you request less, and then the next year you request significantly more, they're going to be like, well, you did, you know, more with less last year, so we're not going to approve that. So those budgets kept improving, kept getting bigger because they're always like, well, we got to ask for more or we won't get it the next year. And to me, that was just backwards. That didn't sit with me very well. I really didn't like that. And so we would prioritize things and make sure that we're getting what we need. No, we don't need, you know, 20 more of these types of tools, we've already got them, whatever the case may be. But one example that I had of saving the government a lot of money on a project, I mentioned it earlier today to some of those... Some of you were in the room, was when I was deployed to Kuwait, we had a terrestrial, a ground-based circuit, a ground link that would provide internet to the base. And it was... And we had backup systems, you know, satellite connections or whatever, just not as reliable. So, one of my contractors, when I was out there, he said, Captain Brooks, the last two flight commanders that have been out here, I've told them about this project, and they thought other things were more important. So I had him tell me about it. It was basically a backup link to the base. And he was convinced that we could get it very inexpensively for the government. And I brought it up, I thought that was a good idea, because right before I got out there, that main landline that serviced the base for internet was cut, and they were on...
They were on... They're in trouble with the feed.
Okay. Speaking of internet connections, right? So, anyway, they were relying on unreliable satellite circuits to try to carry out the mission. It was really poor. And so I talked to the commander, he said, yeah, that's a good idea. I went back to my contractor, I said, find me those people, find me the internet service providers, let's go out with them, let's get to know them, let's see what they have available. Bottom line is, they gave us a second circuit, a backup circuit, for free because of the way the contract was structured. If they... If the base was down, they were required to actually... If they were... If we were down for more than a certain amount of time, they had to start paying us money back for the contract they were awarded. So it was in their best interest to give us this backup circuit. All I had to do was listen to my people, develop established relationships, and bring it up to leadership, and, you know, I'm always looking for efficiencies, and that one was just such an easy call. There will be things that you have to work a little bit harder at. And, you know, as a communications officer, we had a huge server room, and it was probably two or three times the size of this room in here. And we had equipment. One of my guys said, sir, most of these racks are empty, most of these server racks where all the equipment was. Said, I think we should consolidate it all and wall it off. That way we only have to cool a certain part of the room instead of this giant room. And so we did that. And, you know, I gave the approval, they did it, but their estimate was, based on the electrical bill, was that we saved $170,000 a year in HVAC just by moving some equipment over and walling off the room. So, I'm always looking for easy wins, or maybe wins that will take a little more work, but I'm always looking for things like that. It's a really long, drawn-out answer, I'm sorry, but...
Thank you.
Tom?
What strategies would you use to keep your pulse on issues important to the city of Wilmer and the community? Please provide some examples.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
What strategies would you use to keep your pulse on issues important to the city of Wilmer and the community?
Okay, yeah, so, this is something that I do everywhere I go. In fact, I did it last night when I was disc golfing with a guy I just met named Zach. I was talking to him, what do you love about the community, what do you not love about the community? And I did the same thing when I got some dinner at a pizza place. I talked to the cashier, said, what do you love about it, what do you not like, love about it? And I like to get to know people. When I coach kids' soccer teams, I like to get to know their parents and what their career ambitions are and what they're doing. And so that's far... As far as me reaching out to the community and gathering that pulse, I'm always going to be involved in the community somehow, and I want to hear about those things. And I make that clear to everybody. Whether it's just questions about soccer or other things, I will make that clear to everybody. Now, as far as my own city staff, one thing I like to do is follow our own processes. So if I have a... If I have a computer problem, you know, I'm a cyber guy, my guys are computer guys. I could go down the hallway and ask Airman Snuffy to come down the hallway and fix my computer, or I could call and open a ticket and see how long... I think I shared this in the last interview. But just follow our own process and say, if I were a customer, what is this process like? And, you know, just evaluate it based on that and then follow up with our own team members and with the person who answered the phone, the technician that actually came out and fixed my computer. I plan on getting out into the work centers and getting to know people, seeing what their goals and what their ambitions are, see what resources they need that they don't have. I've learned so many things that their supervisors were unaware of because nobody asked them. So get out into the work center and ask the people what they need. It's just you have to get out from behind the desk, you have to get involved, you have to be approachable. And those are all things, that's what I do to keep my pulse on a lot of organizations.
I'll go over to you, Justin.
Yeah, I'm going to be the first one that deviates from the sample questions, I think. So I'm going to... I'm just kind of wondering, as you're looking at kind of being the administrator and thinking about all the different aspects of city government and all the different kind of departments, which one would you feel kind of the most confident leading, and kind of why? And then which one would be, you know, maybe the biggest challenge, the growing edge you mentioned before maybe needing or appreciating, kind of having an opportunity to have a mentor early on? Like, where would you need that mentor to help? I just like, let's see, finance, human resources, parks and rec, planning developments, police department, fire department, public works?
Yeah.
IT.
It's not like... Yeah, need some mentorship there, yeah. I just want to make sure I'm not standing too close to the mic.
No, they're having trouble with the connection. Brooke, if you're comfortable to continue answering the questions, we're good to keep going, but if you'd like to take a recess so that you're not interrupted by this background noise, we're okay with that as well. We want you to be comfortable and we don't want you to be distracted.
Yeah, no, I'm good depressed right now. There we go. We're good. Thank you for offering that. Okay, so, as I was driving around with my tour guide this afternoon, economic development is something that I would certainly want to have a mentor, have several mentors. That's where I'm going to have to spend a lot of time networking and getting to know There is so much going on in Wilmer right now, so much opportunity, and my eyes were really open to that as I drove around with her. So that's one area that I will certainly be spending a lot of time learning about. I feel good in a lot of the customer service organizations. I've been doing customer service, including military and my own lawn mowing business and retail jobs that I've had. I've been doing that for 20, I think, years now. And I really... Yeah, I'm really comfortable seeing those processes, seeing what we can do better. I really think if someone comes to us, I want to look at... I want our city staff to put themselves in the shoes of the customer and say, if you were in their situation, what would you expect as a reasonable answer? And is there any way that you can just go one step further? Just to make their day, right? And if it's not costing any more... It's so easy to do that sometimes. It doesn't usually cost any more resources. It's just as simple being aware of what's around you and making their day a little better. And as taxpayers, I would be delighted if somebody did that for me. So that's the perspective I expect them to take, and I think that's something that I am pretty good at and confident at.
Thank you.
Vicki?
All right. Welcome to our city again.
Thank you.
Now that you had an opportunity to meet with community and business leaders, how would you collaborate with the leaders to improve the city?
Well, getting involved in their organizations with the chamber, having an open door, trying to get, you know, people into my office or going to them, having lunch with them, getting involved in their organizations, their activities, that's how you do it. You just... You show them that you're interested in what they're doing, you get them to talk, ask them questions. I'll ask them three times if I don't understand the answer, I'm not afraid to do that. And I'm... Same thing with me, if someone has a question for me, you can ask me 10 times in a row, I don't care. I will keep trying to answer your question until I get there. And so, yeah, just doing that, getting in the mind of a council. I also want to network with the county administrator, with other cities in the county or in the area, because I'm sure they're interacting with a lot of the same business owners that I am, seeing what things have worked for them and copying that, doing more of that, and seeing what things are not working for them, who's showing resistance, who is uncooperative, who's not interested, and, you know, just picking their brains as well.
All right, thank you.
Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Tyler, for being here. I hope you're enjoying your time in our community and happy that you're able to come on a day where we have some nice weather to enjoy as well. I'm going to ad lib just a little bit, I'm happy that you divulged a little bit into the economics of our city and the economic engine. Given your background, you obviously have a lot of experience with policy and procedure and that hierarchy. And myself personally, I view a lot of city-related issues. We have an internal city structure, the city as an organization and the day-to-day operations that is the city. But then we also have a community in which is comprised of businesses, nonprofits, homeowners, a whole plethora of items. How do you see yourself taking your past experiences with hierarchy, with structure, with government policies and procedures and all of those things that you know really, really well? How do you see yourself integrating those things with the issues that may be more, let's just say commonplace in the free market, in the business world, in the homeowner's world? Do you anticipate difficulties there? Is that something that interests you, and are you eager to dive into those as well in terms of economic growth and diversity?
Yeah, I'm certainly eager to do that. Now, will there be a learning curve? Absolutely. You've pointed out the military background I had, there's a lot of structure, there's a lot of policies and procedures, you're always trying to get better at. You're 100% right there. As far as some of the other community issues that I don't have the experience with, I'm very eager to learn about those things. If for any reason, then it's a selfish ambition because it makes it better for me and my family. And I know that if I see those things that are impacting my family, I know I'm not the only one. And that's how I'm always in a room. If I see something that needs change or something I disagree with, or I don't understand something that an instructor is saying, whatever it is, I know I'm not the only person with that same concern. And I'm not afraid to ask that question, or whatever the issue is, I'm not afraid to learn about it and make it better. I feel like I'm missing a part of your question there.
Not so much, that did a great part. Can I just add one extra part on there? The public-private partnerships and the ability to have those public-private partnerships, what's kind of your opinion when it comes to government's role in that? Government's role in just how involved government should get in the private sector, should or shouldn't, either way?
Yeah, so, what I have found in the military is the more steps and red tape you have to go through, the more it detracts people from getting involved in things. And so if there's a way to make things more efficient for businesses, to make them attractive and get out of the way, I think that's probably going to be a lot more effective than trying to place restrictions in there. Now, there's certainly some ethical concerns you have to worry about, which is why we have restrictions and why we have government oversight. But that's my opinion, is trying for the most part to get out of their way, present the opportunities to the community, not have your favorite business that you go to, but present opportunities for everybody and say, all right, go, and see what... See what's... And if that works, great, and if it doesn't, try something else. But, yeah, just presenting those opportunities out, getting out of the way, making sure everything's going fairly, that's the government piece, is making sure it's fair and equitable. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, especially the... You mentioned the equitable piece, and that's... I feel like that's a key part of that, so, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, I'm sorry, Audrey?
Thank you. If selected for the city administrator position, when will you be available to start employment with the city of Wilmer?
Right, so, I know that's been a concern for some. September 1st is my day. My... I am technically recallable in the Air Force until October 2nd, but I have enough leave built up that I'll be able to move my family up here and begin getting started September 1st. And, you know, like I said, I'm technically recallable, but there's no reason at this time that my commander would have to recall me back for anything.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
In your interview with us a week ago, or thereabouts, and then also today in your presentation to the chamber and also to staff, you made the comment, "I'm not as concerned about 99 ways to know as I am to one way to yes." Can you expound on that, just a little bit on your philosophy in how you build a culture that leans toward the one way to yes and not the 99 ways to know?
Right, well, building the culture. Well, let me expand upon what I mean. So, find me one way to yes to the answer. If council, mayor, community has a request, and it just looks like there's absolutely no way to do it because of this policy is in the way, or this state law is in the way, or this whatever's in the way, okay, how do we get to yes? Well, the way you get to yes is to see if there's a way to get a waiver for it, and that's a legal process, you know? Is there... Is it waiverable? Can we have an exception to policy? That's what I mean, find me that one way. Don't just say no because the state statute says we can't, you know? Find out maybe the intent behind that. Maybe it was written 60 years ago and it doesn't... It's not relevant anymore, I don't know. But find me one way to yes, don't just tell me why we cannot accomplish anything. That's what I mean by one way to yes. Now, as far as establishing that culture, I think once my guys and gals in the military saw us doing some things that were previously thought not able to happen, they started coming to me with those things. Now, yes is not always the right answer, but there is a yes answer. And at first, they were afraid that the yes answer means we're going to have a lot of extra work and I'm definitely going to go that route. That's not true.
Get out!
They're still working on it.
I understand.
You see, being in the military, you probably had some interruptions in your day, and so we're just checking to make sure that you're still able to deal with those conflicts.
That's very creative. Yeah, so once my followers realized that I'm not going to make them go through a bunch of stuff that doesn't make sense just to get to yes, they started coming to me with a lot more yes solutions, because they knew even though, yeah, the way to get there is through all these steps, that juice wasn't worth the squeeze, as they say, right? So, that.
Sure, thank you. Okay, we had three council members that were unable to attend a number of the functions this morning, so I want to give them the opportunity to have a follow-up question, if they have one. And so, either Councilmember Plowman or Councilmember Butterfield or Councilmember Fagerly, if you have... Start thinking of a thought there, if you have one, we'll go to that. Otherwise, I'm just going to open up to the council, kind of for popcorn questions. With that, Rick, do you have anything that you'd like to ask?
I do. It's kind of private because I'm into sports activities too. I got grandkids that play baseball and basketball. So what ages play baseball of your kids? We're recruiting.
Yeah, okay. Right now, I don't have anybody in baseball. My 16-year-old boy was in baseball for a few years, and his interests changed. So I haven't coached a baseball team for a few years, but we're definitely heavily involved in soccer and flag football. Both my daughters, age seven, age nine, they love soccer, they love getting out there on the field. My son is 10, he'll be 11 here in a couple weeks. He loves football, he's always the quarterback, he wants to be the quarterback, he always wants to... He's a ball hog, okay? He's the guy that scores seven goals every soccer game, never passes the ball, you know? That's... And he's really good and he's gotten better, and he's very much a team player. But that's my age, is seven, nine, 11, 16, and then I have a daughter in college.
Okay, because we have some great booster clubs for all those sports, so...
Good. Good.
Should be good for them, so...
Absolutely. I'm looking forward to it.
Thanks.
Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is going to be a strange question, but I've asked it to applicants at our family business before, or maybe it's just a statement. Criticize yourself. What's one area that you believe that you could improve on that would further your career specifically with regards to should you obtain this position with the city of Wilmer? What's a critique that you would have of yourself right off the bat?
Well, you know, yeah, I've got a master's degree in public administration, local government concentration. All right, so I know a little bit, but that does not come close to replacing experience. City management experience, that's the elephant in the room. I'll admit, there's a learning curve. And so what I would say is getting that city management experience, talking to people, just getting myself into it, getting myself into everything, understanding the decisions that I'm making, that's the obvious area of growth that I have, is just getting that experience. Now, I've heard someone say before, there's a difference between what you have learned and what you can learn, and I know that if the council and the community will be patient, that I will learn what I need to learn to be very effective. I know how to lead people, I know how to manage resources, and I know I can learn these things. So if they're willing to be patient and take that chance, I know we can do some really, really good things. I met a lot of the city staff this morning. I feel very confident in their abilities and their knowledge and skills and expertise, and I will rely heavily on them. And I expect them... One thing that I expect all my followers to do, especially, especially those in managerial roles, is to tell me if they disagree with me. You know, in the military, there's a stereotype that the commander says jump and they all say, "How high?" You know what? Technically, yeah, I could do that, but nobody leads effectively that way. And I've never seen that method of leadership used, never seen it be successful outside of a training environment, outside of like basic training. So it hasn't been used with me, I haven't used it with my people, so that's how I intend to get better.
I appreciate that, fourth rate, Todd. Thank you.
Other council members who wish to ask an additional follow-up question? Councilmember Ask?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've mentioned, I think, a couple times that there's a relatively significant amount of openings for the city staff that you would have to, you know, look to hire. What do you look for in employees? What would you be looking for as you had candidates coming to you for those various positions?
So, I want to make sure that they're not just managers. You know, you're a leader before anything. Anybody can manage people and resources, but can you lead them? And that's different. And so I'd like to see what they do to improve themselves, not only technically in their career field, but as a leader. Are they reading books about leadership? Are they attending leadership conferences? What is it that they're trying to do to make themselves better as a leader? And, you know, that's what I'm definitely looking for. I encourage all of... You know, they say leaders are readers. So the chief of staff of the Air Force has a reading list, and I've read a few of the books on that, and I intend to keep getting better. And that's what I expect of them as well.
Thank you.
Apologize for being kind of monotone. Been talking all day, so I hope I'm not putting anybody to sleep.
I can do a follow-up question to the comments you just made. Provide for us three examples of mentorship, and how many people are you currently mentoring?
Yeah, okay. So, the Air Force has assigned me to be an ROTC instructor for Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University in Daytona Beach. That is the largest detachment of cadets outside the military service academies, okay? We have about 400 cadets. And for those that don't know, cadets are the ones that are going to commission and become officers immediately upon graduation. So our job is to lead them and guide them so that they're ready to inherit complex situations immediately and be able to lead people through that. And they've asked me to train them on how to do that. It is a position now, ROTC instructors are a position that you have to be nominated and competitively selected for. And I was nominated. That just changed in the last few years. So I was nominated and selected, and I was able to go down to Daytona, and I love that piece of the job. You know, of all of the deployments and all of the things that I've done in my career, my favorite thing is always mentoring and leading and teaching, sharing my experiences. So that's what I'm doing with all those cadets. I teach the 100 level, the freshman cadets. It's about... Starts off the year with about 200 freshmen. They kind of self-eliminate throughout their years in school just because they realize it's not for them, so that number dwindles. But one of my favorite things to do is to sit around after class and just answer questions and help them, whether it's about leadership and mentorship or it's about buying a house, I don't care. Let's talk about it. That's my favorite thing to do. So that's an example of mentorship that I've given. Example of mentorship that I've received has been from a deployed commander. He turned to me and he said, "Look, I'm too busy. My job is to have the vision for the entire squadron. I don't have time to micromanage you, so run your shop as you see fit. And if you empower your employees to do that same thing, they're going to be very happy with you." And so that's what I did. I turned around to my section chiefs or department directors, if you want to call them that, and I said, "Look, run your shops as you see fit. I don't want to be micromanaging what you're doing." If I'm having to do that, then there's a disconnect on what you should, you know, where you're performing versus where you should be performing. And I would say a third example of mentorship really has come from a lot of the books that I've read. Actually, I'm going to go with a different one. I got a message two weeks ago from a master sergeant that I supervised when we were deployed. And typically, master sergeants, when everybody leaves, they go back home, they get a piece of paper called a letter of evaluation that tells how well you did while you were deployed. And they can take that back and use those bullet points for their annual review. And typically, we don't rank people. This was my best airman, this was my best whatever, but this master sergeant was exceeding expectations the entire time. And I brought him into the commander's office and I said... Well, I went to the commander's office and said, "I want to recognize him. I do want to say he performed above his peers. I do want to make sure that's in writing and it goes back home with him." And so the commander did that, and he presented him with his commander's coin. That's a tradition in the military where if you do something good, the commander or whatever organization will present their coin to you as a token of gratitude. So he gave this master sergeant his coin. He went home. Couple weeks ago, he reached out to me and said, "Hey, that extra line on that letter of evaluation made the difference, and I got this new job that I've been wanting for a long time." And it was a promotion for him, and so that really meant a lot to me. That really meant a lot to me, so those are three examples, I suppose.
Thank you. So earlier today, you were asked, "Are you an oak tree or are you a shrub?" Has your answer changed?
Has my answer changed? I don't know if I actually answered the question because I was trying to figure out what you were talking about. Yeah, no, we, you know, we're... There's a poem, and I wish I could recite it, but I can't.
But it would be stellar if you did, right?
Yeah, yeah, I would look pretty...
You'd knock it out of the park.
Yeah, but it's called "Good Timber," and so I would hope to compare myself to an oak tree, I suppose, that has the strong roots, that is not swayed by every blow of the wind, gust of the wind, one direction or the other. So I don't know if that's exactly where you're going with that, but that's where I would hope to classify myself.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmembers, I don't want to monopolize here, but I do have a few things more that I'd like to ask. Anybody else have a question they'd like to ask? You know, at lunch today, we were having a conversation about fish. And, you know, there's some of us in the room that fish, and there's others that wish they could. So you haven't walleye fished before? And walleye is kind of a big deal in Minnesota. And, you know, give us some examples of how you would engage in extracurricular activities in our community. You've talked a little bit about that specifically around the questions that Rick asked you, but talk a little bit more about that on how you would engage and how that daily or weekly or monthly thing would be. And if it includes fishing, that's fine. That was just kind of fluff.
Sure. Well, that was a... I apparently didn't educate you well enough on my background because I have walleye fished. It was my son...
Oh, it was your son?
It was my son who...
I didn't listen well.
Yeah, no, it's every time we move, my son looks at the possibilities and he goes, "All right, Dad, if we move here, here's the type of fish we can catch." He gives me that report, right? I grew up in Nebraska. We had walleye and pike and muskie and things like that, but he had never caught one of those fish. He goes, "If we go to Wilmer, Dad, I'm going to catch my first walleye." So that's where that story came from. And yeah, yeah, we're looking forward to that. He enjoys it a lot more than I do, but I do enjoy getting out there. Now, yesterday, I arrived in town about noon, drove around the community, and I spoke with some people. One of the things I did is I stopped and I talked to a guy that was fishing. I said, "What are you catching?" And he told me some largemouth bass and filled me in on some things. So, you know, just being approachable to people, you'll learn a lot that way. That's one way I plan to get involved, is just talk to people. When I went disc golfing last night, went up to a guy named Zach that was out there. I didn't know his name was Zach, but I was like, "Hey, you want to go together?" And we did. And he showed me around the course, talked about Wilmer, what he likes, what he doesn't like. Again, when I'm coaching my kids' teams, I'm going to be involved with them and their parents and talk to them. I love to hear about what they do in the community and what they do for their jobs and their families. And, you know, that's just part of who I am, is just trying to get to know people.
Okay.
In any organization that I'm... I go to church. I'll get to know the church people. I'll probably get involved in some of the organizations with that. In my church organization, I have led a youth committee in which we planned over 20 activities for about 200 youth in the church. And that was a few years ago, but it's just one example of some things that we do. It's just what you do.
Any follow-up questions? Okay, so I think we probably have one last question that we'll ask. If you were to consider the position in Wilmer, what is one obstacle that we would have to overcome?
Well, I mean, we've kind of already talked about it. It's just that you would have to overcome with me as your city administrator? Is that the question?
No, maybe the better way to ask it is, is there something that you saw today either in the community, on your tours, in your meetings, one thing that we would have to work on together to correct? Not that you have to work on, but that we as a community would need to work on?
Well, there's some things I didn't know. As I drove around yesterday, I was looking, I was trying to find something. I was trying to find, are the roads terrible? What does the entrance to the city from this highway look like? What is... And that was kind of a difficult thing to do because the community is so nice. One thing I didn't get to see today or yesterday was, what are some of the parts of town, you know, that are maybe a little older or that need some work? What do they look like? And how can we help them out? How can we do those things? How can we improve that part of town? How do we make sure everything is equitable for everybody? One specific thing is kind of hard for me to nail down right now because I didn't get to see all the bad things. So that's a hard question for me to answer right now, but I would ask for your patience as I get to know everybody around the community and the problems in the community.
Certainly. Well, now we want to give you an opportunity to ask us questions that you have. And if you wanted any clarifying... Us to try to clarify something, and it can be to us as a group, or it can be to a specific council member, or however you wish to address it.
Okay.
Any questions that you have?
I don't know that I'm ready to answer that. Everybody's been great. I've answered... I've asked a lot of questions today. As far as you specifically for the council, I don't know what to ask right now. You've all given me your insight on the schools. You've all given me insight onto everything that's important to my family, and I feel like those questions have been answered professionally on that side of it as far as the community I just want to know how patient you're willing to be as I continue to learn and how patient you're willing to be waiting for me to start until September. That's what I'm looking at. That's kind of what I'm wondering, is how much does that mean to everybody? We don't need to answer that right now, but that's something that's on my mind.
Certainly. And I think probably each of the council members will have a different answer to that. So, council, want to take a stab at it? Of course, you all know me, I'll take a stab at it. Anybody want to take a stab at answering that question? I guess what I would say is you wouldn't be in front of us if we weren't willing to entertain that. You were very clear, and you disclosed that in your application. It was right in your application that you have a commitment to the military that has to be followed. You're here because we value what you put on the piece of paper. We value how you answer the questions, and today, we're just checking to make sure that are you the right guy or is Dana the right guy? That's what we're looking at. And that's going to be a lot of analytical work that the council's going to do after today, and there's some more testing that needs to be done and some more background checks that Patty's going to be working on with Baker Tilly. And I think that we're very comfortable. I'll speak for the mayor's office. I'm willing and able to help you through some of those challenges that you talked about. We have city administrators within the area who have already reached out to us and said, "You know, whatever candidate you select, we certainly want to be a part of helping them become part of Wilmer and be part of our community because we know that you're coming from outside of the community." And so we're okay with that. We're good with that. Otherwise, we wouldn't have brought you in today.
Yes, that's a good point.
So I think it helps to hear it.
Yeah, it does. Okay, well, you know, that really helps a lot. I met Dana earlier. Talked to him five or 10 minutes. He's very personable. See why the council likes him. So I wish you the best of luck with whoever you choose, and hope that's me. And I'm willing to answer any other questions that I can, so...
Okay, I'll ask one more question. If you were offered the position, would you accept it?
Yes, this is a great opportunity, especially, you know, first opportunity after the military. And don't read into that first. I don't mean first like I'm going to be here and move on. I'm just saying, my first job as a city administrator coming out of the military, this is perfect. And I've had several of my city manager mentors in Florida and in Nebraska, which I am networked. Tell me yes, absolutely. You should be taking this, and it makes sense to us.
Perfect, perfect. Brian or Patty, anything follow-up wise? Okay. Well, we know that you've had a long day because we have too. And so we really thank you for coming to Wilmer. We loved the explanation on the rental car. That was pretty... I mean, I was looking at that Subaru going, "Man, I tell you, I'll trade in my 2010 with 205,000 miles on it, right, Andrew? Huh? Be all over that." So I know that Patty and Brian will probably be in contact with you, and, you know, the council will determine tonight after our second interview, you know, what that timeline is going to look like. We really feel quite strongly that we need to have some more of those analytical pieces. So I don't know if the council's going to make a decision tonight, but I would lean towards the fact that they're not, so don't be alarmed by that. Just understand that we're going through our process. One of the council members down at the barn had told me that we're being evaluated as well. And, you know, when I did my introduction to you this morning, I said, "This is your opportunity to interview us as well because we want it to be a good fit." And so with that, thank you for being here. Thank you for answering the questions and running through the day, and we wish you well.
Thank you very much. It's been a great experience.
Thank you.
I'll walk you out. We have a 10-minute break.
Yes. I'm guessing that he may be here early.
Okay.
Are we wanting to take a, a break?
Maybe five.
Five? Okay, let's take five. Let's be back at five, two.
Recording.
Thank you. Well, this evening, we have our second candidate that is looking for the city administrator position for the city of Wilmer. And Dana, we're glad you're here, so if you'd like to come up to the podium, that'd be great.
Sure.
Tonight, we're interviewing two candidates for consideration for the city administrator position for the city of Wilmer. And we wanna thank you for taking the time to travel here to Minnesota. And, you know, we have the opportunity to show you a great day. It's about 70 degrees and sunny. And I like to say it's always 70 and sunny in Wilmer, so. But you will find some days that are a little bit cloudy and you'll find some days that are a little bit rainy and, but that's just who we are, so. So, this is gonna be very informal. We've got a couple of questions we're gonna ask. And then we're also gonna have the council, we'll have the opportunity to just ask ad-lib questions. But then we wanna save some time at the end so that if you have questions for us or things that you wanna ask of us, that we also give you that opportunity to respond to that.
Okay, sure.
So, there was a question that was asked of Tyler earlier today that we will ask you the same question because our understanding is, is that, that you were not asked the same question and it was a, a question that we had during the staff interaction time. So, we'll be asking you that question, but we'll tell you ahead of time that you did not have an opportunity to answer this question and we'd like the question answered. And I believe council member Ossmus will be asking that question.
Okay.
So with that, we're gonna go ahead and get started. And just wanna ask you, you know, how was your day today? I mean, what did you like about the city of Wilmer? What are some things that you saw? You can remove your mask if you choose.
Sure, thank you, thank you.
Then we can hear you better, probably. And then, how was your tour? And then, what are some specific things about Wilmer that really attracted you to Wilmer?
Well, my day was great. I, I enjoyed the time that I had. I appreciate all the organizing of the activities. I think Brian was keeping us on task as best as you could. I appreciate that. I thought the, the beginning of the day was great to meet council members who were there. Really kinda took the edge off a bit to, so that made the rest of the day go even better. So, meeting the staff, got to answer some questions there, enjoyed that part of it to kinda get a sense of those folks. The business community or the stakeholders, that was another good meeting. I thought great questions asked of myself and my background and that type of thing. The, the tour was very eye-opening. I thought Aaron actually gave me the tour and a lot of, a lot of things that are going on, a lot of things that will be going on. He was explaining projects that had been put in place and how that all transpired. And he is very passionate about what he does and it came very, very, very clear. So, that was really a good discussion, honestly, between Aaron and myself and looking at all four quadrants of the community. So, I got a good sense of residential, commercial, industrial, public institutions like this. And I'll say the old state hospital, I know that's not how it's called, but that facility is amazing as well. And so, there's not a lot of communities that can reflect something like that. The, Wilmer is, it just, it appears to be a very progressive community, very clean community. That's very evident upon observation. And the people where I had stopped in have been very nice and cordial. Either they know we were coming and they were told to be nice or they're just that way and I believe they're just that way. And so, I kinda gathered that from my time here. So, yes, all in all, very nice community. I'm glad that I had the opportunity to come here and meet you all and the citizens and others that would be interested. And again, I wanna give kudos to Brian for keeping us all on track today, not an easy task. So, thank you.
You bet. And we have three council members that were not able to join us earlier today, so they will, they may be asking some additional questions. But then at the end, it'll just be kinda like popcorn questions after we get through some formal questions. So, we'll go around to the entire council. Each will ask one question and then the three will be given an opportunity to ask additional question. And then it'll be kinda some popcorn questions coming to us. Okay? With that, I'm gonna go to Rick, council member Fager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to Wilmer. I was not able to meet you this morning, but I'm glad we're meeting now.
Thank you.
What do you see as a challenge facing Wilmer in the next two years? And if you see a challenge, how would you deal with it?
I think based on, you know, what I've learned today, there, I think significant challenge is to put in play the projects from the optional sales tax and, and hope that the funding comes in. If there's a shortfall, decisions will have to be made on the projects, on either all of them or taking, or scaling them back. I think that that's a, a decision at this body on how you wanna proceed moving forward. I think that that's maybe challenging moving forward. And the fact of having enough staff, I know that there's some position openings right now that will have to be filled. They're key positions in the, in the community and I think that would also assist in getting those projects through. So, I see those two areas as, as fairly challenging right off the bat. I know that the city engineer is leaving or has already said he was going to, to leave and so that's another, you know, key position. So, making a decision on what route you wanna go there, you know, can, there's a couple of different ways to go and that's a decision that would need to be made on whether hiring or, you know, contracting out, whatever might occur there. Just keeping the momentum, I think the, there's an expectation of the public that voted to approve the optional sales tax to, to keep the projects moving forward. And also, I think that just reading and such, I think the, the city hall is, is an issue. I know that's been brought up about what to do about city hall. If anything, at this point in time, it's been discussed about a new city hall as part of all of this too. And funding that may have to be found to assist in those efforts. So, I think those are key challenges right now for this position.
Thank you.
Julie?
This is kind of a wordy one.
Okay.
Okay. What is your philosophy and approach to fiscal accountability, transparency, and the strategic investment of public funds?
So fiscal sustainability or, or being fiscally conscious is wisely using the taxpayer dollar. I look at it as there are priority programs. There are mandatory programs, public health and safety, emergency services, tho, those are really expectations. And then you have some discretionary programs. But I think ultimately, you've gotta prioritize what's important and funnel the, what we call limited resources into those particular areas. And I think that you need to be transparent to allow the public to view what we're doing, how we're spending funds, what we're spending funds on, and that it meets an expectation of the public through the city council, through a strategic planning process or something along those lines, that we're using the funds on those priority areas. And then making sure that we have funds that we have set aside, in my opinion, to get other projects going. Fund balances are always good to have and investing your, your money into programs that will maintain your finances on a, on a good level. You wanna watch your debt service. You wanna make sure that you're proactive in providing for those needs, but utilize your, your council, your financial advisors and your bond council as to your debt service and making sure you don't go too far, that you can manage what you have. So, I think that that is important. And then looking at your programs, are they efficiently run? Are they effectively being run? Do they meet those needs? Are there ways that we can look at those programs and run them a little bit differently in working with the executive management team where we may be more efficient and that'll help us in the long run fiscally?
Thank you.
Did you make it downtown at all?
Mm-hmm.
What would be some opinions from you to try to help boost the downtown?
You have a, I mean, there's a, I actually took a walk downtown after the, the meet and greet. And then I, of course, drove through it earlier in the day on my tour. There's some vibrancy down, downtown. I think that, I didn't see a lot of vacancies, although there are some. And I think that one of the strategies would be to provide some more, what I call pedestrian orientation, make it better for the pedestrian, make it more walkable, make it a place-based, what we call in planning, place-based area, providing for more amenities downtown. And then you'll have more folks coming in. I think it's a, it's a matter of how do you get the, the citizen or the visitor to not just come downtown to stop in a business and leave, but how do you get them to stay longer? And then it's providing some nice amenities for them to, to stay longer downtown. As it would relate to business development and working with economic development, the foundation and Aaron, I mean, there's incentives also there that could be applied to businesses that are looking to expand or do some things with some of the vacancies and providing maybe some new business locations. And to support those efforts, I think would be very important. There's a lot of diversity downtown, which is great. I mean, it's, it's quite a, just a lot of different cultures, a lot of different activities. And I think to understand that and understand maybe what some of those needs are for those business owners and operators would be very important as well to try and get a sense of how can we help those others to, you know, become better in, in what we do in the downtown area.
Council member Oss, Justin?
Yeah, so you've worked in, in city government for a little bit and, and had different experiences there. And obviously, as a city administrator now, you're working with like, you know, the whole thing. And there's quite a bit of diversity in what the city offers and what the city does. And so, as you're thinking about all those different services that the city has, all the different departments, all the business that they do, which ones do you feel like most confident about and feel like you got a really good understanding of this and which ones might be a little bit more of like a growing edge where you maybe lean on the expertise of a, of a department director? So, you know, human resources, parks and rec, finance, police, fire, planning and development, public works, like what are your thoughts with that?
Sure. A lot of different services. So, I've got really over 20 years in municipal government. So, in the communities that I've worked in, we've had the police, the fire, the water utilities, public works, planning and development. We've had parks and recreation and all of those. So, the planning and development area is really where I spent a lot of my time. So, planning, building inspections, code enforcement, parks and recreation, cemetery, and, and most recently, some public works functions, solid waste management, streets and parks, so still parks and recreation. I was doing that in Duncan. I think I've always aligned myself well with finance and budgeting. So, though that's an area that I hadn't ever presented a full budget to the city council, I've been a, a partner or player in putting the budget together for the consideration typically through the city manager and then to the city council. And I think that when you have expertise like you do here, that's an area that I would utilize. I may be looking at it more from the three, 30,000 view, look and looking at how it all fits together. So, you know, budgeting and finance, I understand that. I've worked on an enterprise fund through solid waste, but, you know, that's an area that I, I wish I, I had more experience in and, and an area that I can gain that experience. So, that's a key area, but I think it's, it's very helpful to have those that understand it and you can rely on them giving you answers when you're asking the right questions.
Thank you. Council member Davis, Ricky?
All right. So, what strategies would you use to keep your pulse on issues important to the city of Wilmer and the community? Please provide some specific examples.
There's certain avenues to gain information from the public, from the general public, from your stakeholders, which are the external stakeholders, the chambers of commerce, the convention and visitors bureau, other organizations, nonprofit organizations, and then your internal staff. I think first and foremost, you've gotta figure out and get out in the community to understand, you know, what's going on. And that's what I have liked to do. So, it's a matter of getting out there and listening very well to anybody who is willing to speak and, and understand really what's going on in the community. And it's very, you can do it observationally and, and then you can do it really by doing some analysis also. So, how many housing starts do we have? Are we having an issue in those particular areas? Have we been able to provide for business development? Are we working well with our customers on a customer service basis are, are very important. When I was in the three cities, actually, city of Duncan, city of Wichita Falls and the city of Abilene, we had done what's called listening section, uh, sessions, action delegation sessions to involve our stakeholders and ask them questions about how we're programming with them. And in those meetings, we would get some good information on the pulse of the community and how we work as a local government in providing needs to them and others in the community. So, and, and that information is then presented from this position to you. So, you understand too, from my perspective, what's going on in the community because decision-making down the line will most likely reflect trying to work through a problem or address an issue that we're finding out in the community just basically, you know, by listening and, and understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Plom, Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi Dana. Nice to meet you. This is gonna be a little bit wordy, but I'll try to summarize it a little bit better towards the end. You have extensive experience in government, in policy and procedure. Our job as a city council is to establish policy. And now I'm gonna hit you with the heavy politics. It's, it's no secret that across our nation and all the way down to our communities, there can be a divide in terms of private sector versus public sector and what their roles are in our community's development. Do you believe that a city administrator, do you believe that it's their job and, and are they hypothetically able to bridge that divide? And if, if you believe that's possible, how do you see yourself in that role?
I think there's a role for the city administrator, Net. You look at the private sector, for instance, they're investing in this community. They are this community. And so, we provide public health and safety for the, I would call them the public, they're the private sector. And so, we gotta ma, we gotta maintain that. We've gotta make a, for a safe environment in whatever we have at our disposal for the services that we provide, the programs that we can put in place, we wanna maintain public health and safety through emergency services and that type of thing. The, the divide, I think that the private sector may look at the public sector as somewhat slow and lethargic in, in what they do, but you have to be very good about getting through and vetting decisions that you make. Some people may want you to work a little quicker on something that affects them, but you have to do it right and make sure it's very... services that we provide, the programs that we can put in place, we want to maintain public health and safety through emergency services and that type of thing. The, the divide, I think that the private sector may look at the public sector as somewhat slow and lethargic in, in what they do, but you have to be very good about getting through and vetting decisions that you make. Some people may want you to work a little quicker on something that affects them, but you have to do it right, make sure it's very comprehensively and thoroughly evaluated before you can make a decision. And I sometimes think that the private sector, the public doesn't understand that role sometimes. It's not as easy as they think it is, and I think that by providing transparency and information out to the public, they can gain a better understanding of what it takes to make those community-wide decisions. That you're not going to get everybody in favor of whatever decision you're making. You hope to, but it's not always going to be that case. You make the best decision for your constituents and for this community. And so, I think they need to try and understand that. And so, this role has to, I think, project that understanding and gain a sense through reports or through in, information presented to the public about certain decisions and, and why they were made, based on my understanding, and try and bridge that gap between what you do as a body here and how it would affect them out in the community.
Thank you for that answer, I appreciate it.
Did you have a follow-up, or are you good on that one?
I think we're good.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson, Audrey?
Thank you. If selected for the city administrator position, when will you be available to start employment with the city of Wilmer?
That's a good question, and typically, you'd get a 30-day answer. If you're a little bit of a distance away and you've got a few things in progress, you could extend that out a little bit to 45 days or maybe a little bit more, depends on me. I've got some things that I was given to really reorganize and reposition a department, and we're waiting on a person to come in and fill a position that we hired, and that's 30 days in itself. And to get that person up to speed, I would feel somewhat disloyal if that process didn't conclude itself before starting a new position if I was appointed. So, I would say 35, 30 to 45 days, somewhere's around in that area, I think, is, is reasonable.
Thank you.
So, now that you've had an opportunity to meet with community and business leaders, how would you collaborate with those leaders you've met today to improve the city of Wilmer?
Well, you've got a lot of leaders, you've got a lot of folks that are involved in what happens in Wilmer, they have a lot to say, they've got a lot of input and a lot of ideas. Folks like Aaron, very passionate about Wilmer, and so, how do you get that? How do you bring all of those leaders together and form consensus on moving forward? And you make the decisions, but you want to know what, what they think. And so, from this position, I need to understand through dialogue with those folks and those organizations, what they do and what they need to support what, what they're doing in the community. And that's building a good relationship with those folks. And so, I anticipate something much like what we do in the city Sweetwater. We have what's called a sounding board meeting, recurrent, it's once a month where key leaders in the community get together, and in this case, it's key government leaders get together, the county, the school district, the city, and get together and talk about issues that affect each other. That should, that would be expanded into really a stakeholders meeting, I would say, not as needed, but more recurrent to those that want to be involved. We can talk about really the issues of the day, and again, that's a good way to generate the pulse on what's going on in the community. And ultimately, want to work together, and so, discussing key issues and garnering or getting the ideas from those folks is very important because it can assist in recommendations that you'll see down the line may have come from a process like that, that, you know, this is, this will work, we, we, there's support out in the community for something like this, and I think that's something that you would like to know as you're deliberating on problem solving and, and trying to put something in play that addresses a key community need.
Thank you. Councilmembers either Fagerly, Butterfield, or Plom, any follow-up questions? Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For you to succeed here, you have to have a good team, and we're missing some team players or will be shortly. So, it appears that you have done some hiring in other communities, and you're familiar with hiring hopefully good people?
Yes, yes. I've been in the, really, the director role for a good number of years, and, and with that comes a responsibility of making sure that you have a full allotment of staff. So, I've had to go in and hire direct reports. I guess the, the perfect example, and I, it was when I started in the city of Abilene. This is a, coming from a community of about 22,500 into a community of about 123, it was a little bit different, I was more hands-on in the city of Duncan, and then more management relay-based in the city of Abilene. But once I, I got there, no fault of my own, we, there, there were retirements that were coming, they had already been announced, and then some folks left for other positions, and I was left with, I had six direct reports and I had four leave, and I was brand-new. So, I had to go in there, and it was a window of opportunity because there was a, really a, a new way of doing things from a development services standpoint. They wanted to be more customer-oriented, more friendly in that area, so we were able to create or change job descriptions for those that we would hire in to reflect those expectations moving forward. But yes, had to hire and fire where, where needed in my 20-some years as a director. So, yeah, got to try and keep a full staff, and it's not easy sometimes because of the type of position, the location. You know, if you're in Sweetwater, Texas, it's sometimes hard to hire in positions because you're a little bit off the beaten path.
Thank you.
Councilman Tom?
How do you feel about jumping back into a polar vortex?
Into a what?
Polar vortex, when it gets 50 below?
No problem.
Ready for it?
Yeah, I think so. You know, I've been doing, you know, local government, I've been doing municipal government for a long time, and, you know, really ready for the next step. And so, I think that the skills and capabilities that I have, I think I'm ready for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How important do you believe local, how important do you believe culture is to a community? And with regards to that, what role do you believe that a elective body and, and municipal body play in establishing that local culture?
So, local culture, there's a, a few different ways to look at that. So, your local culture is your community and your diversity. Those that choose to live here, do business here, raise a family here, that's your community culture, and that's really important, and the more diversity you have, the more enriched culture, in my opinion, you have. And I think you need to try and work with those different types of groups and cultures because it does enhance what we do and, and how we learn in, in our personal lives. Culture from a local government standpoint is a way of how we're doing business, and are we meeting the expectations of the public? Are we meeting the expectations of the city council as an administrative team? And is the culture effective? Do we need to look at the culture, make changes to reflect new needs and expectations? And I think that from a, from this standpoint, it's important to manage that and manage it well because we want to do the right things, and we want to make sure we get the right people that are going to do the right things. And it's all based on really the vision and the mission of your organization, in case city of Wilmar. So, all, taken all together, culture is essentially important, and I think to tap into that in any which way that you can and make changes where needed in some areas is very important moving things forward.
May I follow it up?
Okay, thank you. With regards to the position specifically as a city administrator, and with regards to the elected body of the council, how comfortable do you see yourself interjecting, and maybe that's not the right word, but who cares, your, your own opinion as to that culture versus, say, an elected body? How, how comfortable are you in, in putting your opinion out there versus executing what the council votes on?
Sure. So, you communicate with the, with the council, and then you communicate with your, your executive management team. I think as a city administrator, first and foremost with the council, I think it's very important that if you are tasked with, I always use the word, you know, the, the problem-solving or to address community needs, we need to be seeking some of those alternatives for you to consider. There's better alternatives than others, and I think this position needs to come in and say, this is the recommendation that we have before you, and it's based on a lot of analysis and input, thinking this is the right one, this is the one that we would like for you to consider. And I think to be very stern about that, you want to know my opinion, I'm going to tell you the opinion, but I'm also going to back it up. I'm not going to just say, just do it to do it, you know, there's reasons why it's important for you to consider as a body a recommendation. And so, I think I have to be forthright, I have to be upfront, and I have to let you know. If it's policy administration, then you're working with your direct reports. If it's a decision you've made and it's a change, and now I've got to work with the direct reports, the other directors to, to move a program forward, I've got to be the same way. We've got to try and get some directional changes there and, and get the folks to move either programming, their customer service, whatever it is, to meet the expectations that you had when you adopted the ordinance or, or the policy. So, I'm not afraid to speak out, but I'm pretty diplomatic. I've had to be in, in my experience working with planning and zoning commissions and Board of Adjustments and at the city council level. So, you try and get, you try and get the, the information out there, you back it up, but I'd rather, I'd rather bring it to you rather than not. And I think that you're paying this position to provide that information for you to consider it. And if you consider it, in a yay, great, if you don't, that's, we just move on.
Excellent, thank you.
Julie?
Okay. In Minnesota, we have had some really high-profile police shooting incidents. And not so much here in Wilmer, but maybe in the metro, in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area, there's been a huge push to defund the police. And I know that their intent is not to, you know, totally take all the money away from police.
Sure.
But what is your position on restructuring law enforcement?
Just a minute, Dana.
Yes.
You're being asked this question because Tyler was asked this question earlier today, and so, this is the question you're being asked because we want to hear your answer because he had the opportunity to answer this earlier, and it is a Minnesota-specific question.
Okay, great. So, yes, I'm ready. Did you want to add? Okay.
Nope, just, what is your, what's your opinion?
My position on defunding.
About restructuring law enforcement, and should we be considering that in, in Wilmer?
Sure. Well, obviously, there's been a lot in the news in, in Minnesota and Wisconsin and other states, but Minnesota-specific, and I think, you know, you've got your, your police force, they're there to provide for public health and safety in the community, and I think that a lot of the community expects that. I do believe that it's important for changes, to become more acquainted with the neighborhoods and the people that are in the neighborhoods and become, I call them beat cops, right, you're, you know, to get out there and be more visible in the community and gain some relationships. I'm not saying that's not happening, but I think it would be proactively, it would be very proactive to go in there and, and work very closely with the areas in your neighborhoods and become more of a partner. I think that that is an expectation, or I see that. Defunding, I don't see defunding, I just see maybe changes in becoming more neighborhood-sensitive and working closer with the key leaders in that neighborhood or those neighborhoods. And that's what I see maybe getting more involved in. It's no different than what we do when we have code enforcement. You can write tickets all day long, but really, the, the progress you make is when you go in there and work with people and understand, you know, what it is that they're, they're doing. There are some folks that you just can't, you know, it's, it's difficult, it's difficult to get around, but you do the best you can to understand those neighborhoods and, and work as a partner, and so, we don't have any issues that come up, hopefully.
Thank you.
Okay. Council, any popcorn questions, anything that just pops up that you'd like to ask? Councilmember Ask, Justin?
Can you just tell us something unrelated to city municipal government that you're passionate about and something that you care about, maybe it's a hobby or family or something like that, like something at the core of your, of who you are?
Pretty family-oriented. I, a lot of my decisions, even moving from position to position, have been based on family. And, and some have been better moves than others, quite honestly, because of family, but I wouldn't change what I did. So, that's very important to me. I love my family and, and do everything I possibly can to support what they're doing, and, and at this point, been very, I think, pretty successful in that regard. I really am one to recharge, I like the outdoors, I love to walk alone, I love meeting people, and I like all of that, but I got to get away from it occasionally, and so, I do. And, you know, I like to fish, I love to ice fish, I haven't done that in 20 years. But that, those are the kinds of things that I like to get away and recharge my batteries doing that. My, my wife probably couldn't understand that in the first few years of our marriage, and, and so, we, we have come to an agreement that sometimes I need to get away, and it's been for the betterment of our relationship moving forward.
Great, thank you. We can probably give you some opportunities to ice fish, I think.
I know.
What kind of fishing decoy is better, a Lyle Bethel or a Lauren Bethel? Just, 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 yeah, let it go. Okay. Any of the council members have questions? Okay, I have a couple other questions for you. This, so I worked in Appleton, Wisconsin for five years, so I'm very familiar with the Fox Valley, so.
Yeah.
Which part of the Fox Valley? You were in Manassas, right?
I grew up in Appleton.
Oh, you grew up in Appleton?
Yep.
Yeah.
I worked for Consolidated Papers when they were there, and I worked for Fox River Paper for a couple years outright out of high school.
Yeah, I know both of those facilities, so, yeah, yeah, good facilities. So, anyways, talk to us a little about, a little bit about your leadership strategy, and then also, give us some examples of people that you're currently mentoring.
I think it's important, and I, I've said this a few times, I think, to have a visionary perspective. As a leader, you're, you're looking down the line. You're trying to make change where change is needed, and you need others to come along with that change, so it's visionary. What are we trying to accomplish? How can we accomplish it together? As a leader, I like to work and, and delegate as much as I can to the staff because they have the expertise. If they don't have the expertise, then I try and find the resources for them to, for training, financial, so they can get some things accomplished. So, it's not just day-to-day management, it's all about where are we going to be, you know? I mean, I've been in comprehensive planning processes, strategic planning, and so, it's always somewhere you're looking ahead. You anticipate needs in the community, and then you act. And whatever I have or whatever I can bring to the table, I look for action, I'm action-oriented. I believe that in that process, that to be creative, or at least I believe that in that process, that to be creative, or at least to try to be creative and innovative, and recognize efforts of staff that are, to try and work in what I call that gray area. It's not just black and white, it's not just a yes or a no. The way that you come up with really creative ideas is you expand that line, you blur that line, and you have a gray area to provide some additional options or alternatives that still meet the intent of what you're trying to accomplish, still meet the intent of your city codes and your building codes, but you're looking for solutions. And that's rewarded when the staff are looking beyond the, you know, the status quo or the way that we've done this for years. It doesn't work anymore, so let's find a different way to do it. That's always been rewarded. And so mentoring, the, I have a really good example of one person that I've mentored. I've mentored others, and really, in this role, in the roles that I've been in, you're in constant mentoring, really are, because you're sitting down and you're trying to understand the person and the professional, and trying to work them through what they need to accomplish for work, and then they have some personal goals that you want to help them succeed with. I had a Parks and Recreation Superintendent when I was with the City of Duncan. He had worked under the City Engineer and the Public Works Director for a few years, and then I was given the responsibility of the Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Departments. And the City Engineer did things a certain way. It was the City Engineer's way, and that's fine, and that worked there. But when the superintendent became under my responsibility, I didn't do things the same way the City Engineer did. I wanted this gentleman to work very well with our sports organizations, those stakeholders, where if we're mowing ball fields and we're working on infills and we're fixing up the cemetery, we want to be really good service providers, provide that good customer service the best way we can. And it got to be where I found that it was the superintendent versus the sports organizations, and he was unwilling to provide that good customer service or go the extra mile to support activities that were bringing people into the community. And so I came up with a process and brought him along with it, and actually, in the lead role, is to involve our sports organization stakeholders in a planning process for all of our public facilities that they use. So we invited all of the sports organization folks and asked them what their needs were. What would you like for capital improvements or how we manage on a day-to-day, and we'll take that information and we'll put a plan together. And so he took the lead, and it kind of forced him into that lead, put him up front, and was behind him all the way, supporting them efforts and mentoring him through that process. And he figured it out eventually that, you know, we're working for the public, it's not for our own convenience on what we do. This gentleman, a few years later, became very key in leadership Duncan. Actually, we had certain leadership days. I managed Local Government Day, and he took on Quality of Life Day, that he was, he went through the process. And so he was then working with new leaders in the community, advising them and working with the sports organization's people to let them know what assets we have in the community and how we work together, how he works together with those stakeholders. So he came full circle. I mean, what he did is he figured it out, he knew that he was working for them, built a great relationship, and it was a complete turnaround. And so that was really more mentoring him into a process that I felt was more effective for him in what his job responsibilities were.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions? Okay. So we're having some technical difficulties. So Councilmember O'Brien is, had texted me this question, and it's, "What would be your first step in solving in-house disagreements that affect not, that affect not only the positive output of city, but the well-being of our employees regarding city business?"
The first step, I think, coming in and be part of your first 30 days, 60 days, is really to start establishing those individual relationships with your staff and how they work together as a team, and come to some idea on, you know, how we're going to be kind of running the same, in the same direction. Again, it's really more that visionary perspective and get everybody on the same page. And I think that's what he's alluding to, there's going to be disagreements. And so from my standpoint, it's always important to allow for an open-air discussion. If you don't like something, you need to speak up. If you like something, you need to speak up, and to then have that discussion at really the staff level, the executive management level, if we're talking about our staffing. I think that's the best way that you can effectively build your team. It's okay to not agree, but it's not okay not to be disrespectful. You have to respect the opinion of others, whether you agree or not, and that's how I would manage right off the bat. I think the staffing is a key resource, and to get an idea of what capabilities are there, the culture and all of that is really a first step in figuring out where you want to go from there.
Okay. I'll have one question at the end, but we want to give you an opportunity to ask us any questions that you have of us, and then we'll kind of take it from there, and then if council has follow-up questions, I'll ask those. So are there any things, anything that through your day-to-day that you saw, you have questions about, or questions about us? This is the time to ask those questions to try to clarify that.
Okay. I really, I mean, I have, I guess, the key question, it's a standard. I know that, that there's challenges. I was asked, you know, what challenges do you see out there? Key challenges, right? And I think I hit on a few. I may not have hit on all of them, and it's always nice to know, coming right out and starting, and, you know, that first 30 days, that first 60 or 90, you know, what you think the real challenges are going to be for this position to overcome early to be successful as a city administrator. And I think, you know, that's a question for anybody, I guess, who would like to answer that.
I'll give the council the first opportunity to answer. Counsel?
I think you have to get the confidence of the employees to believe in you, and that'll be very important.
Okay.
Because they've gone through quite a few managers or administrators in the last few years, so they're on edge because they want to know what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to expound on that a little bit, I think, yeah, we've already talked about a few of the key positions, that there are going to be, there have been some changes, and there are going to be some changes. And we have a, we have a council that's relatively new. When I came in, here, I came in at the same time as the mayor, about seven years, seven-plus years back, and at the time, a majority of the council had many, many more years' experience. And so we have a council that's comprised of some newer individuals, and I think that coupled with some of the changes that are happening internally, staff-wise, and, you know, interdepartmentally, I think there present some challenges there, but with challenge comes opportunity to create bridges and methodologies that may improve the function of the organization entirely.
Okay.
That would be my answer.
Thanks.
Councilmember Nelson, Audrey?
We have an awful lot of things going on, and so just a prioritization. I feel strongly that we need to do things right, not just do them, and so to make sure that we are taking the time to get it right, but we can't wait for other either. So somehow finding that mix with how do we prioritize what we can handle in the situation that we're in with staff and resources.
Thank you.
I think we've kind of hit on some of the major issues. I think anytime an organization has the turnover we're having, you don't have to go to very many leadership classes to figure out that there's a problem. It teaches you that pretty quick. I think Councilmember Fagerley really hit it on the head, you know? I mean, we've had, if you want to call it, five administrators in the last 10 years. I think that's what people are telling you, and that's been in the paper, it's been in the press, and I'm sure you've been watching that.
Sure.
And so I think we're at a really good spot right now because I think myself, I'm looking inward rather than outward and saying, am I part of the problem or part of the solution? And how can I be part of the solution? And then being honest and telling us, this is what the problem is, and you need to fix it, because otherwise, I'm going to be here two years too, and I'm going to be gone.
Sure.
So, and I think that we are, I am, ready to hear that, and I'm ready to make changes that I need to make to make this community better. I think you probably heard loud and clear through the day-to-day, because I heard it in the groups that I was in, people here love Wilmer, and they're committed to Wilmer, and they want Wilmer to be good. But going on to what Councilmember Nelson just said, we have so much stuff to do, and the city administrator does not get time to get a break.
Yeah.
Because it all gets dumped on the administrator.
Sure.
And what the most recent members of the administrator staff pool that we've had have told me is that you are expecting me to work more and accomplish more than is physically possible. And I think that's why you see that the council has added the Assistant City Administrator position to try to offload some of that. When I was in management, I figured if I didn't have at least four hours a week to sit and do nothing, I wasn't productive, because all I was doing is running from one crisis to the next.
Yeah.
And so we have to prioritize our list. We have a lot of stuff on shelves that we haven't done, and the reason we haven't done it is that we aren't giving our staff the tools to accomplish it. That may, in my opinion, the mayor's opinion only, may be what is leading to some of our staff turnover. So I think that that's something that you're going to have to address and analyze as the administrator, and I think that we're ready and willing to listen to those observations and conclusions.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if that answers. I think that probably gives you a pretty, a pretty full plate.
I think all the answers kind of give me a good sense, probably a sense I didn't have before I got here today, and I appreciate that very much. You know, you got to, you got to work well, you got to have full staff, and you have to prioritize. If you don't prioritize, you're just going to keep shooting and missing. So you got to, success breeds success. You get a project done, you move on to the next one. And the nice thing about, I think, from the public standpoint, is when you can put things in place that are successful, they have more confidence in your ability to do that. And I think it goes from the public and it also goes from the staff. So if we're successful in putting something in play, we've all had a hand in it, that's something we can pat ourselves on the back, and we should be recognized for that, or they should be recognized for those efforts. And then we go on to the next prioritized project and do the same thing.
Sure, sure. Additional questions you have of us?
No, thank you.
So I said I had one question, but I actually have two because I always have to add something.
Sure.
So that's why the city administrator is always so busy. So can you, can you give me one example of something in your career that you're proud of?
Yeah. You know, really, this is a little bit odd. I'm not going to talk about a program, I'm not going to talk about a change. Obviously, I've been with a few communities, and in most cases, I've been able to move from one community to the next and understand the community needs, the culture, the different codes and ordinances that are in play there. I've been able to adapt and fit in quite well, and I think that's a testament to understanding that I'm coming in and learning first, and then I can project my professionalism and my expertise further to try and assist that community. So I've been successful in doing that, for the most part, I have been. If you talk about a program, I think that when I was with the City of Duncan and the same-size community, when we went through our comprehensive planning process, was, you know, I would hang my hat on that because we had a great process that involved a lot of our stakeholder organizations very heavily in the input, and so we had come up with a very good comprehensive plan with recommendations that we were able to implement. It didn't sit on the shelf, and it's still, I haven't been there in five years, and they're still implementing off of that comprehensive plan that was done back in 2010. So that was a good process because I got to initiate that, I got the funding for it, I got the support to move forward, and was able to create processes to gain some input, and then built some really good relationships with some of the leaders in the community that were then tasked with implementing those recommendations right alongside or with me. And that was a very good program or planning project for me in my career.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. So the final question I have for you, and it can either be a short answer or a long answer. But so, as I said this morning in my introduction, is that we're interviewing you, but you're interviewing us as a community.
Right.
So you have saw a lot of different things today, you've observed different things, you've seen how different things function, you've had an opportunity to meet with our staff, with our community leaders. We had an open process for the public to come in and visit with you if they chose to. And with all of that being said, if you are offered the position of City Administrator for the City of Wilmer, are you still in a position where you would want to take that position?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We were going to deliberate tonight and maybe try to come up with an answer, but we're, you know, that concludes the formal interview, unless council has another question or something. I want to give everybody ample, ample time. So we're going to deliberate just a little bit.
Absolutely.
But one of the things that we found is that some of the analytics that we're looking for hasn't been able to be completed because we moved from the interview and the final selection of people to today rather quickly.
Sure.
And so there are some of us that feel quite strongly that we want to see those analytics.
Absolutely.
And so if we don't make a decision tonight, don't let that sit wrong with you. Understand that we're just looking for more analytics because we want to get this right.
Yeah.
And we're really excited that you've chose to be here. You've interviewed very well, you're a very strong candidate, and that's why you're here.
Thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate that, and yes, by all means, you need to make sure that the decision that you make together is the right one, and to have the information to make that informed decision is the only way that you can take care of that.
Perfect, perfect. Any other closing comments?
Well, the only thing I'd like to say is thank you. Thank you to all of you and those that I got to meet earlier and then I got to meet this evening. I appreciate the engagement every step of the way. A lot of you were at the events today and observing and being part of that, so I gain a sense that it's very, very important to get this process concluded. But also, you want to know that the person that you ultimately offer this position to is going to do what you're needing them to do and is the right fit for this community. So I would leave it at that, and I really, really have enjoyed my time here, getting to know all of you and learning about the community. I believe it's a really good fit for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You bet, thanks. Okay. So I will just kind of give a brief overview, and then there are some council members that were present when we had a conversation with Patty earlier this afternoon. Some of the background checks and some of the testing results are not in yet, and so we haven't been able to compile that information for the council. so we haven't been able to compile that information for the council to review. The council is certainly at a position, if they want to select a candidate and move forward, they certainly could do that this evening, and give direction to Patty to work out and negotiate the agreement with one of the candidates. I think it's very important that we see the analytics and have an opportunity to look at those, because I think there's a lot of value in that. And, but that's the mayor's opinion. And I'm certainly here to hear what the council wishes, but that's kinda what Patty told us this, this afternoon. And some of the background stuff, we're not real concerned about, just simply because of the candidates we have. But we also wanted to do those background checks, and she cautioned us in that if you do make a selection this evening, and then something would come up in the background, you really only have one of the candidate to consider. And so she encouraged us to do what we cho, what we choose to do, what we want to do, but just understanding that if you wanna take a little bit more time and make sure that we're getting the right candidate, we can do that as well. So for those of you that were there and, and heard the conversation, anything that you'd like to add to that? I think I surmised it fairly well, but Julie?
The bottom line of what we came up with is if we had made a decision, if we make a decision tonight, and then something happens with the, the analysis that comes in, and we have to change it, like the mayor said, I don't think that looks good to the public. And it doesn't look good for us. And I just think we can make a better informed decision, we just need to wait until the leadership analysis comes in, the personality inventory, and the rest of the background checks, and then I think we can make a good, informed decision.
Okay, anybody else? Councilmember Plomman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I also like the idea of just a little bit of time, not only so that we can each internally and individually analyze the things that we heard tonight, but also that allows more time to chat with other people, local community members, local stakeholders and whatnot, and get their impressions. It's, it's always good, I mean, there's no, there's no individual person that says, you know, that has the ability to say, you know, "That's it." But I think each, and in, each and every opinion that you get feedback on from the community can add some perspective that you didn't have before. So I like the idea of, of taking just a little bit of time.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you. I would agree that it would be in our best interest to wait. I think we have done a good job with engaging the community. We still have not seen those results from today either, and I think to take this extra time to make sure the t's are crossed and i's are dotted, we wanna do it right, and I think that'll give us the opportunity to make sure everything has been completed before we make our decision. So I would agree with that.
Okay. Is there anybody that wishes to make a motion this evening to proceed on one of the candidates or the other? Brian, we would ask you to work with Patty to get the analytics to us, and then if we could have a preliminary report to us, either verbal or written for Monday, that would be helpful. And then what I would like us to suggest is that Patty kind of inferred that maybe some of that information may be available by Wednesday of next week, but she's not sure of that. But then at the council, you didn't hear that?
I thought she said 10 days.
She said it could take as long as 10 days. Yes. She said she thought, she was hopeful to have something back within, by Wednesday. Because what I heard, did I hear that wrong? I wanna make sure I'm speaking correctly.
I think Councilmember Osmos is, is correct in that she wasn't sure that it would be back. I think the 10-day thing was said, but I don't know when the 10-days started, so I'm not sure what that means with that. And might be helpful for us just to have that update on Monday so that we can plan a meeting accordingly.
Okay. Can we do that? Okay. Does anybody have any other direction you'd like, like to have Brian give to Patty on this selection process? I just wanna make a comment too on our staff and how they made it open for people to engage if they chose to engage. We had a number of different opportunities where the general public could attend, and we had two sessions this evening specifically designed for the general public. And that was publicized through the West Central Commune, through, through the radio stations. We did a press release, we had it on our Facebook pages, and so we really tried to get out into the public and say, "We value your opinion, we want your opinion, please give us your opinion." So I, I agree with what Councilmember Nelson said a bit ago, that we really are trying to engage the public. And Councilmember Plomman, I agree with you that we're gonna hear a lot of phone calls. I mean, I, I had a number of emails when I got home from our conversations this morning. So I think we have two very strong candidates. I think we have two candidates that could do a very good job for us, and I think that they do bring different skill sets to the table, and that's up to the council to decide. So Brian, do we wanna wait for Patty before we adjourn, or do you think we go ahead? What's your thoughts?
Ms. Eminore is probably just right outside the door, but we, I can relay the information that you, you offered here.
Okay. Somebody that wish, Tom, did you, or, does anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn then?
I'm a-
Motion made, we're seconded, we are adjourned.